Good evening. The February 5th, 2024 legislative session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silent. We will begin with the invocation and pledge led by Mr. Volkey.
Good evening. Please pray in a manner consistent with your faith as I pray in a manner consistent with mine. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that affect us and those around us. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality. And continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, it's my pleasure to welcome Brooke Lierman, Comptroller of Maryland, to the podium. She's going to share some remarks with us and answer any questions we may have. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the County Council. It's really wonderful to be with you today. I'm your neighbor over in the Louis Goldstein Treasury Building, but I've never been in this chamber before, so it's really a pleasure. I have been on the road now and trying to get to different counties and meet with their county councils and commissioners throughout the state, just to let you all know what we are working on in the office of the comptroller. I'm excited to speak with you tonight, as one of my goals as comptroller is to be more proactive in reaching out to the community and forging partnerships with fellow electeds around the state at every level of government. So tonight, I just want to talk about our role in the state and also talk about a report that we recently released on the state of the economy that I hope you'll take a look at as well. So many of you are familiar with my office, but some are not perhaps, and so just like to make sure that people do understand the role of the Maryland comptroller, which is unique in American state government. There is no other statewide elected official in any state that I have found that has my same job duties. So first, I act as the state's elected CFO and paymaster. I watch every dollar in and every dollar out, pay all of our state employees around the state. Second, I sit on all of our fiscally related boards. This, of course, includes the Board of Public Works, the Board of Revenue Estimates, and our State Retirement and Pension Board, where I serve as vice chair. In these roles, I really see my job as serving as an independent voice, ensuring that we are achieving best value for our tax dollars, taking aim at waste, and focusing on open, accessible, and transparent processes for everybody. Finally, I serve as our state's revenue administrator, which I have learned is a nicer way of saying "tax collector." Last year, we collected more than $17 billion in gross income tax revenue, processed more than 3 million individual income tax returns, dispersed $3 billion in refunds to more than 2 million Maryland families within two and a half business days on average. So in short, my agency has wide discretion over a host of income-based issues that affect every Maryland family and business, so we have shared constituents. And always look forward to hearing any ideas, or if you have any concerns or constituent-related matters, encourage you to reach out to our office so that we can help you serve your constituents better. So I am here on what is an exciting day, actually, for our agency. Tomorrow, we will be launching a hugely anticipated modernization effort, and this really folds into one of our core priorities as a state. So I have three core priorities in our agency that we've adopted. The first is to reorganize the agency to make government work better, and as part of that initiative, we are focused on modernizing our systems. I inherited an agency whose tax processing system and state accounting system are some of the oldest in the nation. They're all in COBOL, if you know that programming language, or at least know of it, and on mainframes. In fact, we run the mainframes for the state in our Annapolis Data Center as well, just up the road as well. So our goal is to move these systems off the mainframe, out of COBOL, into new, more transparent, safe, secure, and efficient systems for all Marylanders. And part one of that is happening tomorrow, when we launch Maryland Tax Connect. Maryland Tax Connect will be the brand-new online portal. We will start with all businesses. So starting tomorrow, businesses will be able to register with a username and PIN, to receive their username and PIN, to sign up, to pay their taxes, withholding taxes, sales and use taxes, corporate income taxes, even cannabis taxes, all through this brand-new online portal. Eventually, Maryland Tax Connect will be available for all taxes and fees that we collect, including, of course, the personal income tax, Bay Restoration Fee, and many others, and will provide both a better service for Marylanders outside of the agency and will ensure that our team inside the agency are not stuck on green screens anymore and that we have a more usable database system. We have been reaching out to stakeholders, including all of you, and over the next couple days, we're excited, hope that you'll share with your constituents, including your small businesses in your district, that there is a new way for them to interact with our agency that I hope will save them time and money over the long run. So that is the first core priority that we have in the state. The second core priority we share I have is to make sure that the resources and the focus of our office and the expertise in our office is reaching the people of Maryland. To do that, we have retooled our public engagement efforts. We've set up an Office of Public Engagement. For the first time ever, we have an Office of Intergovernmental Affairs as well, so somebody designed to reach out and work with you all, with our municipal governments, with the clerks and the registers as well. And we're focused on getting resources out into the community, whether it's through ensuring that people know how to access free tax prep, working with our small businesses. We have a Small Business Director for the first time ever who's liaising with them, making sure folks understand how to get certified as an MBE and more. And then our third core priority is ensuring that we are leaving the state better than we found it, securing our fiscal future and making sure that we're growing our economy over the long term. And there, we're really, I'm focused on working through the Board of Public Works and our State Retirement and Pension System to make sure we're being a good fiduciary for our pensioners, keeping all types of risk in mind, including climate risk, and making sure, as a Board of Public Works, that we're getting best value for each and every dollar, really thinking, working with the agencies to make sure they're exploring all options, ensuring that we're meeting that 29% minority business enterprise goal so that we can build a more resilient economy over the long term. So those are our three core priorities. We're thrilled and honored to lead an agency of 1,200 employees with 12 offices around the state. Now, you all have both the headquarters here. We have the Louis Goldstein Building. Next to that is our Revenue Administration Center, and then next to that is a little building in the corner, which is our Annapolis Data Center. But then also on West Street, we have a branch office in Annapolis as well. We have 11 branch offices around the state, including this great one right on West Street, which has a wonderful team in it. I was delighted in my very, in my first six months in office to make sure that I got to every branch office, from Cumberland to Salisbury and Waldorf to Elton, to make sure I visited with our teams to see how we could serve Marylanders better and work with them more. So now I want to turn to our report on the state of the economy. This is a new initiative of our agency, and it goes along with core priority too, making sure that we're sharing the resources and expertise of our agency with the people of Maryland. As part of that, last year, when I was at my, was chairing my first Board of Revenue Estimates meeting, we really saw that our revenues were just not growing as quickly as we anticipated as a state and not keeping up with our neighbors. I said that this really indicated flashing yellow lights for the times ahead and that we needed to get, have a better understanding of what was working in our economy and what wasn't working so that we could be sure to tackle some of those challenges. And so our Bureau of Revenue Estimates and our new Policy Division, which I created when I took office, worked together over the next 12 months, or the next six months, excuse me, to hold roundtables with business leaders, economic development professionals around the state, and to crunch the numbers as well. And on January 3rd, we released our State of the Economy Report, which you can find on the front page of our website, marylandtaxes.gov. It's just a light 100-page reading, you know, it's like good bedside reading. So just a few snapshot of the findings that I wanted to share today. Coming out of the pandemic, Maryland's economy is strong in several areas, including unemployment and household wealth. That's great news, and we are lucky to have a unique mix of industries in Maryland. We have an exceptional number of federal agencies in the state, over 60, many military bases, and along with them, many contractors that work with them. We also have strong university system that helps propel us and private universities and schools as well. However, our economy is growing at a slower rate than the U.S. and than our neighbors. We are especially lagging in private sector job growth and growth in labor force participation. So our federal growth, federal growth is happening, but private sector growth is not happening at the rate that we would expect it to. And part of this is because we have an extremely shallow labor pool in Maryland, and that is holding us back. We don't know the exact reason that we have such a shallow pool, but we have many, there are many parts that contribute to it. So first is women ages 25 to 34 are not, have not returned to the workforce in Maryland at the same levels they returned in other states since COVID. Now, I can't tell you exactly why every woman who hasn't come back has not come back, but certainly childcare costs are a factor, and thinking through the age of, the age of the women who haven't come back. And so I know that the General Assembly is looking to strengthen some of their childcare support programs and have, in fact, passed legislation last year. But it is a big issue for, it continues to be a big issue for women. We are also facing net outmigration. So we are a lower cost of living state than some other states like New York, New Jersey, and so we see people, DC, they're, we have people moving from those states to Maryland, but we have a higher cost of living than some other states like the Carolinas or Florida. So we are losing people to those states, and we're losing people to those states at a faster rate than they're, than we're gaining people from the other states. We, so we are seeing our population decline for the first time since the 1940s during the pandemic. So one of the things that we have, we also delved into was thinking about why people are moving and what drives that higher cost of living. And it's not an issue that is foreign to you, but housing costs are one of the prime reasons that people feel that it is too expensive to stay here or live here. And in fact, at nearly every single business roundtable that we had across the state, housing was the number-one issue that our business leaders brought up. Finally, I'll note that mental health challenges and the opioid epidemic have also contributed, we believe, to our labor force participation rates. If you look in our report, you will see that the opioid epidemic sort of times perfectly with when our labor force started, participation rates started going down. Of course, we were tragically, had one of the highest opioid death rates in the nation. So this labor force participation is really key to ensuring that we can grow the economy and grow our private sector over the coming years, and then grow our revenues. So we need to do better, and this report is just one way that we believe we can continue drawing attention to some of the challenges that are facing Maryland. I am not a policymaker. I leave that to you all and to the governor and our General Assembly, but I do believe it is important that the Office of the Comptroller equip you with the data that we have available as we continue to do our job. And so finally, I also, I will conclude, and I'm happy to take questions, but I want to just focus on partnerships. I truly believe that we can only serve our constituents by working together, and so we are very focused on making sure that we're reaching out to county councils, to municipal leaders, to business leaders, CDCs, and more, to make sure that you all and they all understand that we're here to work with you. We may be behind the scenes a lot, and that's fine with us. It's better if we're not on the front page usually. That means something's gone wrong if we're on the front page probably, but we want to always be a resource to you and for you to know that we're here to help address challenges, help you seize opportunities, and to provide information. So I'm behalf, on behalf of the 1,200 members of the Office of the Comptroller, thank you for your service. Thank you for having us here tonight, and I look forward to continuing to work with you to build a better Maryland. Thank you, and happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. I always appreciate hearing you speak, Ms. Lierman. Do we have any questions for the comptroller tonight? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Comptroller. Thank you for being here. So I appreciate the report and the drivers that you've indicated that may be part of the reason that we're seeing some of the challenges economically. To what degree did your office assess the tax environment or the regulatory environment here in Maryland, and do you see that at all as a factor in the, particularly the outmigration with respect to people going to other jurisdictions that some of them you named off are obviously slower tax jurisdictions than here?
Sure. So taxes actually did not come up, I don't think, in a single one of our discussion roundtables that we had. It was just not perceived necessarily as being one of the key drivers in the challenge. Also, our state tax rates are very competitive with many other states. It's sometimes, but depending on the county, your ultimate tax rate can differ, right? So we have not done a study on taxes and tax policy yet because we're not the policymakers, but certainly it is of interest to many people, I know, and so if you have questions in the future, we're certainly happy to try to answer them. Sure.
I don't see any question, any further questions, but fantastic to have you here tonight.
Thank you.
I look forward to partnering on many initiatives going forward and glad you're right here in Anarundel County.
So are we. It's great to be here, and we do send out a monthly newsletter that you or your office should receive. If you don't get it, let us know. We are just about to hire a new Intergovernmental Affairs Director, and so when that person starts, they will also reach out to you to let you know who they are as well. But thank you so much, and have a great night.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving ahead with our agenda, Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the County Council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you. We will now open our invitation to audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council. There were two submissions. Everyone here should have gotten email with those submissions. They are included in the summary that is posted online and will be added to the meeting record.
Thank you. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of, ahead of the meeting when your name is called. Please come to the table and state your name and address before making your remarks. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. We have on the list signed up Michelle Schnazite, Kurt Svensson, Kathy Lane, and Martha Blacksall. So I don't see Ms. Schnazite, so Mr. Svensson, you may proceed. Two minutes.
Okay. Kurt Svensson, I live in Arnold, Maryland. My written testimony includes a one-page story demonstrating an example of systemic racism and the year-long struggle to wrestle public information from Anarundel County Public Schools in order to support this claim. I'm not going to read that aloud, but I hope you will read it. I became aware of this through my interaction with a young black man in my community. I was eventually able to assemble, in my own data-wonky kind of way, data-driven support for what this young man already knew in his heart as a result of his own lived experience and that of his ancestors. My data-driven conclusion can be summarized as follows: Black and Hispanic students disproportionately experienced missed days due to lack of transportation during school year 2022, 2023. In the most impacted group of schools, 80% of such absences occurred in these schools, a total of nearly 27,000 missed days. In this most impacted group of schools, white students were 35% of enrollment but experienced 18% of such absences, that's 17 percentage points less. Black students, 29% of enrollment, 36% of such absences, 7 percentage points more, a gap of 24 percentage points. Hispanic students, 26% of enrollment but 39% of such absences, a gap of 30 percentage points. I draw two conclusions from this as I wrap up. If the school bus shortage had been viewed through a racial lens, policies and procedures could have been enacted to mitigate this. And a representative democracy depends upon the accountability fostered by a transparent government. It shouldn't have taken a year for me to get this and to go all the way up to the state PIA compliance board to get this information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kathy Lane?
Good evening, Council Chair Picard and the county council members. My name is Kathy Lane. I'm serving as the Owners Representative for New Village Academy Public Charter School, a new charter school that was approved by the Anarundel Board of Education in August of 2023. We are currently in lease negotiations with Westfield Annapolis Mall to open our school in the fall of '24, in the second floor of the former Lord &amp; Taylor's space. It's about 52,000 square foot of space, of which we'll be subletting 10,000 square foot to Total Healthcare, which is a federally qualified health center, and they'll be serving as our school-based health center as we develop our community schools model. We've also engaged an architect who's done some amazing conceptual designs, and we're proceeding with construction to start with Whiting Turner, April 1st of this year. The reason we're here, I would love to speak a little bit more about our educational program, but the state funding formula for charter schools does not include access to capital funding. So Anarundel County Public Schools rightfully and fairly distributes 98% of their operating budget to us to fund our school, but the $5.5 million build-out of our school facility is not supported by any funds. So we, we have to go for state funds, local funds, philanthropy, grant funds, of which we're pursuing each and every one of those very actively. So we're here today to ask for similar support from this council that you provided in 2012 to Chesapeake Science Point, where you awarded them a $250,000 grant out of your budget to support the development of their gymnasium so that they could offer the physical education requirements and after-school activities for their students. So we're respectfully requesting similar support for $500,000 grant from this council in its June budget. Thank you for your support and your service.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Ms. Blacksall?
Yes, my name is Martha Blacksall, and I'm a board member of New Village Academy, which is the school that Kathy Lane was just discussing. I wanted to just make a few comments in addition to what she said about the kind of school that we're going to have in, in New Village Academy. It's designed to meet the urgent need that we have found in Anarundel County, that there are those young people who don't have any sense, don't sense any future in themselves. They don't see the value of succeeding in high school, and they sort of pass through walking around quarters wondering why they are there. So what we have designed is a new kind of a school, a small, student-centered, work-affiliated school with a dedicated staff, 150 students to start. The whole idea is to put students into a situation where they can relate what they're doing in school and how it implies, empowers them to be part of the workforce. So students will be asked to participate in work programs in the afternoon that will further educate them in a field that they feel they have some interest in doing. We have been awarded the prestigious New Schools Venture Fund Grant, and we're awaiting the release of the federally chartered schools program grant. And because this grant is delayed until the fall, we are having financial shortfall from what we had planned, and we're going to, we're asking therefore the county to support a grant of $500,000. Unlike other states, in here in Maryland, we do not have funding from the Anarundel County Public School capital budget, only from the operating budget. So until the school actually begins operating, there is no county support for what we're doing, and that's why we're asking for this grant. It will contribute to the expense of our renovations, plus it will allow us to purchase the technology essential for 21st century education. We feel it is important that our classrooms are equipped with the latest technologies and digital learning experiences.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak at this time? For the invitation to audience, as a reminder, this is for items not currently on the agenda. Please come up to the table, state your name and address and topic before making your remarks. Remarks will be limited to two minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Council. My name is Matt Minahan, 3651 First Avenue, Edgewater, and I'm here as Chair of the Growth Action Network. GAN is thrilled and very appreciative of the council's action on Resolution 3-24, and particularly thanking the sponsors, Ms. Pickard, Ms. Hummer, and Ms. Rodvian, and particularly Title IV of that resolution. As you know, GAN has been advocating the council's action on hybrid meetings since September of 2023, and we believe strongly that this is a major step forward in including the participation and the voices of citizens across the county in working with their government. Allowing people to speak and be heard from the far reaches of the county relieves them of the long drives from Tracy's Landing in Brooklyn Park in the dark of the night at just the time that families are gathering and eating together. We know there are a few more steps after you approve 324 to make hybrid meetings fully functional. We hope they can be completed quickly and that the council mounts a concerted effort to inform citizens of the new way to participate. We also hope that your newsletters to your constituents will be fully explanatory of this as well. So thank you for taking this major step into the 21st century and opening the doors of government and these proceedings to all who don't have the privilege to make it here in person. We hope the resolution receives your full and unanimous support, and we look forward to seeing the system in full operation soon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The invitation to audience is now closed. At this time, if there is not any objection from my colleagues, would like to move Resolution 2-24 to the front, first in line here, as we have representatives from the community college present. Is everybody okay?
No issue.
No issue. Great. That will, we will proceed.
Madam Chair.
Wait. I'll get you in a minute. At this time, it is, I'm going to take a moment. It's my understanding, although no one has contacted me directly, I have learned that there may be a desire to hear Resolution 4-24 tonight. Both Resolution 3-24 and 4-24 deal with changes to the council rules and have both been scheduled to be heard at our next meeting on February 20th. This was done to allow discussion of these resolutions during a work session. The scheduling plan is in line with our internal small group discussions held last year to look at amending our council rules. Is there an interest to forego our original plan to discuss the modernization of our rules at this week's work session and add Resolution 424 to tonight's agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please add Resolutions 3-24 and 4-24 to be heard at the end of tonight's meeting.
Point of order. I thought the question was whether 424 was going to be heard, to which I responded affirmatively. I think, again, we don't have a parliamentarian here, but we need a motion, number one, to take 224 out of order, because the agenda's been set, the meeting has started, so that's number one. Number two, if we're going to take 424 tonight or 324 tonight, I think there has to be a motion on those separately as well.
So. I appreciate the point of order. We have not set the agenda until, until I set the agenda. There is an opportunity for, which I just gave, for folks to, I asked if there was any objection. We don't need a motion to move an item to the front of the line to reorder the agenda. But we can go ahead and make a motion if, I don't need to get into a parliamentary debate. If someone would like to make a motion or... If someone would like to make a motion, or I can make a motion to hear 3-24 and 4-24 at the end of tonight's meeting. Is there a second?
Radvian, second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Madam Chair, I do need to ask for clarification. We don't have a parliamentarian. However, we have a rule, we have Rule 4101 that talks about the opening and closing of the agenda. We also require five votes to suspend the rules, so I'm a little bit unclear as to what it is the council's doing here, and I would like for clarification on that so I know how to properly read the results of this roll call.
We do have members of the county law office here. I'm not certain if anyone is prepared to help sit in as a parliamentarian, but that is possibly one idea.
So is the question if we need to... if we're going to rearrange the agenda and move items that were previously scheduled for February 20th, if we need a suspension of the rules, which would mean a vote of five? Is that the question?
Rule 4-101 says that the agenda shall remain open until the meeting is called to order. At the call of announcement of items not appearing on the agenda, each county council member shall have the right to place on the agenda any bill or resolution to be introduced or any item of business. Once the meeting has been called to order, the agenda is closed and may not be reopened for additions except by suspension of these rules. So by following the agenda here, it appears that we are at the announcement of items not appearing on the agenda. However, a suspension of the rules requires five votes, so that's why I think I need some clarity here, because I'm not sure if four is accomplishing something in particular or if we needed five. Does that make sense? I believe Ms. Lori Blair Klosmeyer, she looks like she's ready to jump out of her seat.
Ms. Klosmeyer, if you'd like to join us.
Madam Secretary, I'm going to change my vote, which will give us five in the affirmative, to suspend the rules and add 324 and 424 to the agenda tonight.
Okay, so I'm changing Mr. Volkey's vote to yes or aye?
Aye.
Okay, so that means that the end result is we have five in the affirmative, two in the negative, so the motion to add Resolutions Number 324 and 424 to the agenda this evening has been passed, correct?
Correct.
Thank you for the help with that.
Sir?
I was simply going to... he just left up, recognize Delegate Simpson, he was in the audience, that's what I turned my light on for earlier. Just wanted to recognize him when I saw him in there. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm revisiting my point of order about Resolution 224. If that's going to be moved up, I do think you need a roll call vote, suspension of the rules.
Okay. Sometimes it does and sometimes it doesn't. Tonight it does, Mr. Volkey, okay. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to move Resolution 2-24 to the beginning of the agenda?
Radvian, so moved.
Hummer, second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules to hear Amendment 2-24 first in the agenda.
Resolution.
Oh, resolution, excuse me.
Sorry. Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to add Resolution 224 to the agenda to hear first this evening has been passed.
May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill, or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Radvian, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of January 16, 2024.
Minutes of January 16, 2024. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 7:00 PM. It was opened with invocation given by Ms. Pickard and was followed by the pledge of allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 16, 2024?
Radvian, so moved.
Is there a second?
Hummer, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of January 16, 2024 stand approved as read. Yes, ma'am.
At this time, I would like to make a motion to reconsider the vote on Bill 9223.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to reconsider the vote on Bill 92-23.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. The motion to reconsider the vote on Bill Number 9223 has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 92-23.
Bill Number 9223, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning Small Business Districts.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 92-23.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Bill Number 9223 has been reconsidered and passed.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Fiedler?
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the vote on Bill 9423.
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to reconsider the vote on Bill 94-23.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. The motion to reconsider the vote on Bill Number 9423 has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 94-23.
Bill Number 9423, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Requirements for Conditional Uses, Business Complexes in a Residential District.
Is there any discussion on Bill 94-23? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 94-23.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
I'm sorry, you moved so fast, I lost...
I don't remember the number.
Oh, Bill 9423.
Thank you. Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
And Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 9423 has been reconsidered and passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 624, An Ordinance Concerning General Development Plan, Region Two Plan. Bill Number 724, An Ordinance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region Two. Bill Number 824, An Ordinance Concerning General Development Plan, Region Seven Plan. Bill Number 924, An Ordinance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region Seven. Bill Number 1024, An Ordinance Concerning Retiree Health Benefits Trust Agreement. Bill Number 1124, An Ordinance Concerning Crimes, Civil Offenses and Fines, Possession or Discharge of Firearms, Property of Another. Bill Number 1224, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Special Community Benefit Districts, Maryland Homeowners Association Act, and Open Meetings Act Compliance.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
We have no resolutions to be introduced this evening, Madam Chair.
Well, that's easy then. At this time, we will proceed with Resolution 2-24. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 2-24.
Resolution Number 224, Resolution Concerning a Petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anorontal Community College Funding.
This is an administration resolution. Welcome to the table, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Melissa Beardmore from Anorontal County Community College and Lori Blair Klosmeyer. So this resolution petitions the Maryland Higher Education Commission for a grant of $720,000 from various community college loan acts for the Anorontal Community College Floristano renovation project in Arnold, based on a resolution from the Anorontal Community College Board of Trustees to request council approval. It's related to a capital project in the county's CIP, and in order to apply for state funding, this resolution is required documentation that we have to submit to the state. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions relating to Resolution 2-24? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 2-24.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, this one we did put out for...
Oh, public hearing?
Yes.
I'm sorry, my apologies. Just ready to roll it through today. Madam Secretary, we'll now open the public hearing on Resolution 2-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
We did not receive anything, Madam Chair.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Please come up to the table and have a seat. When is your turn? State your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution Number 2-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 2-24.
Resolution Number 224, Resolution Concerning a Petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anorontal Community College Funding.
Is there any final discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 2-24.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 224 has been passed.
Thank you. Thank you for hanging in here. We'll now move along in our agenda. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 84-23.
Bill Number 8423, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Public Works, Odenton Town Center, Master Plan.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Mark Wildonger from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. This is the Odenton Town Center Master Plan that we have discussed at many prior council meetings and work sessions, and have worked through a number of amendments. I do want to thank both the Office of Planning and Zoning and the council member from District Four for working with us on all of these amendments. I know it's been a long process, but there are no further amendments, and we would encourage the council to pass this tonight, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Yes, well, first off, I just realized for tonight, all this work that we've done, and I did not add my name as a sponsor to this bill, so please put my name on there after all of this. I want to make sure that my work is recognized on this. And I also want to thank all the parties that have been so involved, our Odenton Town Center Advisory Committee, all the staff, especially Mark Wildonger and Christina Pampa from OPZ, Kelly Kenny and Pam Groves from the Office of Law and the Administration. I think this is a strong plan, that we are already talking to people in the community that are looking to this plan to bring some good things to happen in the Odenton area. And so I ask for all my colleagues' support, and I move to adopt.
For one last time, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 84-23. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair.
I do not have anybody signed up in advance. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 84-23? Please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. Mr. Title, you have the floor.
Store Title 8373 Piney Orchard Parkway. Thank you all. Today, I'm expecting the passage of the 2022 revision of the Odenton Town Center Plan. I want to thank you for your consideration of the plan's revisions and its amendments. Although I'm disappointed by the lack of other stakeholders and trades testimony before this legislative body, I assure you they have been engaged behind the scenes, and some of my testimony has voiced their concerns as well. No plan can be perfect, i.e. the Rhodes Amendment, because every development has its own unique issues. However, the Odenton Town Center Vision Plan will continue to be reviewed every five years, and items incorporated into Articles 17 and 18 can be considered for amendment when or if necessary through bills presented to this legislative body. I want to thank Planning and Zoning for doing their best to hear many of our concerns within this bill, and their consideration and support for many of the amendments put forth. I appreciate the efforts of the Odenton Town Center Advisory Committee, developers, trades, landowners, and concerned citizens, and of course, Ms. Hummer and our sponsor of the bill, Mr. Smith. I believe that's correct. Is that correct?
Well, the administration, I would definitely give them the credit. As the chair, I'm just pass-through to some extent when it comes to just being transparent.
Appreciate that. Anyway, I appreciate everybody's time and consideration in this bill, and I'll look forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no further movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 84-23 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 84-23.
Bill Number 8423, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Public Works, Odenton Town Center, Master Plan.
Is there any further discussion on Bill 84-23? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 84-23.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 8423 has been passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 93-23.
Bill Number 9323, An Ordinance Concerning Pensions, Participation, Transferred Service, Employees Retirement Plan, Fire Service Retirement Plan, Police Service Retirement Plan.
Thank you. This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Ann Bedowski and Kelly Lovett from the Office of Personnel, Stephen Throw from the Office of Budget, and Lori Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. This bill has been discussed at both a prior council meeting and a prior work session. Just to briefly recap, it allows participants in the fire and police service retirement plans to purchase service credit for prior participation in other plans, adds employees of the resilience authority as participants in the employees' retirement plan, and adds employees in certain job classifications as part of the fire service retirement plan, and allows participants in fire and police service retirement plans who terminate employment for less than 12 months to return to employment and participate in the plan under certain circumstances, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time from my colleagues? There is an amendment on this bill, but we'll open the public hearing, Madam Secretary, on Bill Number 93-23. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. If there's anyone here who now wishes to speak on Bill 93-23, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using the online testimony tool. Mr. Svensson?
Hi, Kurt Svensson, Arnold, Maryland. Not going to take a long time here, kind of like last meeting. Purchase of service credits, I think the amendment kind of goes in the wrong direction. It's making, it's not a purchase. I mean, it's a, it's an increased subsidy. You need to put, make the cost explicit and let the county citizens know what you're doing here. Your, what you do today in this bill, a discretionary action, is in the future going to be sold at budget time as non-discretionary costs. We've got to do it. You're doing that now.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no other movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 93-23 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 93-23.
Bill number 93-23, An Ordinance Concerning Pensions, Participation, Transferred Service, Employees Retirement Plan, Fire Service Retirement Plan, Police Service Retirement Plan.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three. This amendment modifies the contribution rate for the purchase of service credits in the fire service retirement plan and the police service retirement plan.
Thank you. This is my amendment after negotiations with all parties involved, including the administration. I am seeking the support of my colleagues. May I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Rodvian, second.
Does the administration have comments on the amendment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, I'll say that recognizing that this tool is intended to be an incentive to boost recruitment and recognizing that we do have a staffing shortfall in our police department, we are comfortable with this amendment.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. We had a meeting last week. Without going into the substance of the meeting, because I don't like to do that, my understanding of how this works is we were at a multiplier of three before, and three indicated, to Mr. Svensson's point, there is some component of a subsidy, there is some component that is paid by the employee who is laterally in. That was a component, that was a three multiplier. If we move to a four multiplier, my understanding was that makes it net neutral for the county, or net cost, if it, let me say that the right way, cost neutral for the county, meaning there is no subsidy by the taxpayer. The entire cost of laterallying from one pension to another is borne by the employee. Where this amendment moves is to a multiplier of two, which, as someone noted, is the opposite direction of cost neutral, and in fact increases the cost to the subsidy to the taxpayer and decreases the cost that is paid by the lateral employee moving into the department. Am I understanding this amendment correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Now, my understanding of how this came about is through last year's negotiations between the bargaining unit and the administration, there was some discussion about a lateral provision being added into the county code to allow us to bring in officers from other jurisdictions. And in doing that, there was a discussion that that needed to be a cost-neutral provision. And there has been a, somewhat of a dispute between the bargaining unit and the administration as to cost neutral for whom, whether it is cost neutral for the employee that's laterally in or cost neutral for the county and the taxpayers. Am I understanding that dispute correctly?
Ambidalski Personnel Officer? Yes.
Okay. So the original iteration of the bill that was brought forward by the administration had a cost multiplier of three, and now we're moving in the direction of two. So the administration is increasing the cost. What, if anything, has changed since the time that you all introduced this bill to now make you comfortable to go from a place you were comfortable before, but seemingly were a bit uncomfortable when I asked questions about this at the work session, to now a place where you're saying, well, we'll throw in even more, there is even more of a subsidy from the taxpayer. And that's not to discount the fact that there is absolutely a retention and a hiring problem with county police, so I'm not trying to discount that, but I am trying to understand how the county's position shifted so quickly, because last week, my understanding was the county was solid with the three multiplier you brought in, and now you're moving down to two, and I don't see the reason why.
Mr. Volkey, just, it is my, it is my amendment to the bill.
I understand, but the administration has indicated their support of the amendment. So I'm, I appreciate the chair's thoughts, and I recognize where you may be, but I'm more interested in where the administration is, because they're backing this at this point.
Ambidalski Personnel Officer, I think the administration has, is in support of sharing the burden more equally with the lateral coming in, which is what two times the employee contribution rate will do versus a 75-25.
May I follow up?
Yes.
Thank you. So what changed between the time that the administration introduced this bill and was effectively looking at a 75-25 split, and all through the time that we were at the work session, when the administration was uncomfortable with it, and all the way through to the end of last week, and now all of a sudden, here we are? What has happened?
I just think the value of using it as a recruitment tool has just come into play and become the priority for the department to be able to use it as a recruitment tool.
So was the administration presented with some new information that has changed the administration's position?
I'm not aware of any new information that would have, but just in, just weighing the recruitment need above all else right now.
Thank you, Ms. Bedowski. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. How many laterals do we receive yearly on average?
We may get somewhere between 20 and 30 laterals in a year. It does depend, they are recruited throughout the year, but we generally have two or three classes of them, and they are generally somewhere between five or nine in each class.
And that's for both fire and police command?
No, that is just for police. Fire has less laterals. In fact, the last laterals we had were in 21819 for fire.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. I vaguely recall that at some point in the discussions surrounding this bill, there was a comparison from neighboring jurisdictions with respect to how the sort of transfer, you know, how this transfer was calculated in different jurisdictions. If someone could, you know, just refresh my memory of how we compare and how this bill compares to other jurisdictions.
I'm not sure I have the document in front of me, but what I recall from that document is that there is no set, one way that each jurisdiction does it. A couple of the jurisdictions do actuarial equivalents that are calculated by their actuary with each individual lateral transfer, and others have come up with a calculation that is similar in nature to the one that we have put on the table, the multiplier being different, but the calculation itself by taking a salary, multiplying it by the number of years being transferred, times a multiplier.
I have a question.
So it, I, we did receive some information regarding the calculations in this bill. This bill, it's my understanding, does put us in a more generous place than some of the other jurisdictions that offer the same option. Am I correct, Mr. Thro?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Stephen Thro from the Budget Office, I put together that information based on our actuaries' analysis of them. There's only one other comparable jurisdiction that provides a subsidy on lateral transfers, and that's Baltimore City, that does use two times the employee contribution rate. Their employee contribution rate is higher than ours, so would be a little bit more of a cost burden on the employee in that case than this. So we would be the most generous, I would say, compared to our peers.
So as the sponsor of the amendment, it was my, it was, it was my prerogative to introduce this, and in, in the conversations I've had with, with various stakeholders in the administration, I think this is potentially a tool to recruit and retain, will recruit laterals into our police department and put us in a position where we are welcoming our laterals from other jurisdictions. We, we are competing with the entire state and surrounding states for public safety officers. This is something, if, in my opinion, if it is not seen to be a true recruitment tool and it doesn't seem to work, that this code is a living document, and this body can come back and revisit this in a year, 18 months, two years, if need be. But for now, in my opinion, and if four of my colleagues agree, this amendment will pass, we're in a position to be doing everything possible to recruit and retain high-quality public safety officials, and this is one way amongst other things that I think we need to be doing. Mr. Volkey, you have the floor.
Thank you. So we've gone round and round on this multiple times. I'm going to ask the question once more, just so that it's on the record. Do we know what this is going to cost at this point?
No, we do not.
Right. So, and again, I don't mean this with any disrespect to anyone who's serving as a police officer in this or any other jurisdiction, but we are trying to entice folks to come to this jurisdiction, and we are creating what may be the most generous, at least in the surrounding area, if not the state, in terms of a lateral package. We don't know what the cost of that is, and we're going to vote for this, and we're going to go ahead and put this in our code, and we're going to say, well, we'll see how it works, and maybe we'll come back and take it away. That kind of thing doesn't usually get taken away. And so my concern, and I think the only person who testified, Mr. Svensson, nailed it when he said, this is going to become non-discretionary spending in future years, because it will be built into every pay package, every contract that you're negotiating with the bargaining unit, this is going to be something you're factoring into your budgets when you go forward, and we don't know what it's going to cost, and we don't have any good way to get an estimate on that. Is that fair?
It is hard, since every lateral, it's an individual choice for a lateral. So unfortunately, I can't put a dollar figure on it.
Okay.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do we know what the average amount of years that most folks would be buying back? Like, what is the, you said we have about 20 is what you termed, what is the amount of tenure that they've had in previous organization, or previous jurisdictions that they're bringing over? How many years are they trying to buy back on average?
When we were looking at trying to determine how many years could be transferred, we kind of looked in the ballpark between three and five. Those are the numbers. The average number for the laterals coming over is about four years.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. Is there any way to estimate the cost of that average?
For the record, Stephen Thro from the Budget Office, roughly, based on the work that the actuary had done for this bill, the average was a little bit higher for the four that were put in the fiscal note, but if we use those, the current three-times rate would be about a $21,000 cost per employee, so at 30-ish, $630,000. If we go to two times, we're looking at about a $750,000 increase from there. So total cost is about $1.3, $1.4 million annually.
I was about to ask if that's annual, and then you said it, so thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. One more question. Well, I won't promise that. So we have one of the lowest employee kick-in rates of the surrounding jurisdictions. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Okay. Which means that in most other jurisdictions, the employee contribution is higher, therefore, when a law enforcement officer leaves that jurisdiction and gets the return of their employee contributions, they are going to get more than if an Anorundal County police officer left Anorundal County and got a refund of their contributions, right? So arguably, when we're looking at the burden on the employee and having to pay some of this money in, they may actually defray some of that burden, because they're getting a higher amount of kick-in than what Anorundal County is looking for them to get. Does that make sense? You bring more money over from a different jurisdiction, say your kick-in was 9%, but now you're in Anorundal, and we only look for 7.25, that delta of 1.75 is extra money in your pocket that then you can use to make up that employer kick-in that we're talking about whether we're going to subsidize or not. Is that a fair way to look at this bill? Or this cost, I should say, not the whole bill, but...
Yes, they should have, when the, when the cost of the transfer is calculated, they should have at least half of that, if not more, because their contribution rate is higher.
Okay. And is, can I ask one more question?
Yes.
I told you, I wouldn't promise it was the last one. Is there any way that you could go back with the bargaining unit and say, we will not make you pay all this money at the first time, right? Because everyone who's coming in is going to have to get to 20 years with Anorundal County, right?
Yes.
Right. So isn't there an option where you could say, we understand your laterally, we recognize that it's a significant cost to you to be able to pay some percentage, if not all of this, and so we're going to give you a longer time horizon to pay this, or we're going to say to you, if you get to five years, the county will knock this much off. If you get to 10, we'll knock this, and so almost to give them retention idea or bonus, if you will, where they get in here, and they're here longer, but then they're getting some benefit for that. Is that something that would be appropriate for you all to discuss at the bargaining table?
Well, I'm not sure the, the legislation includes a guide path for three years to repay the difference.
Well, I understand what we have in front of us right now is not do that, but I'm saying, isn't that something that if it wasn't in this bill, that you all, you being the administration, and then the bargaining unit could sit at the table and talk about this and try to come up with some options that would give laterals that flexibility when they come to Anorundal County?
The specifics of the policy, I would think, are more management's rights to be able to do that versus the details of, as specific as you're getting, but...
Okay.
The concept, again, the concept of having the conversations is welcome.
I have one last question. I promised this will be it. Are you at the table with them right now?
I am.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, as we talk about these things regarding our public safety, we, we've been hearing at all of our budget town halls, the number of vacancies that we have in our public safety position, so I would, just again, we're just looking to fill those pins with high-quality professionals, whether they're new recruits or laterals. This is a, this is one, one way to get that done, and so if we are done discussing this amendment, Madam Secretary, we, can you call the roll on Amendment Number Three?
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Three has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, can you float the other amendment?
Yes. Madam Chair, Mr. Volkey has an amendment number four to offer. If it's okay with you, I'd like to pass this out, and then I'll read it in.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Four.
Amendment Number Four. This amendment removes the provisions pertaining to purchased service credits.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment, along with Ms. Ledbetter, who is, you're leading on this, I see. You have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. So I will ask for my colleagues' support on this amendment. This provision of this bill, the lateral transfer, while it is certainly something that the bargaining unit has asked for, and I absolutely think is something that needs to be considered and discussed, it's not ready in this bill. This bill on the other, you can sort of think of this bill in three component parts. Two of the component parts are now at a point where they're ready for this council to pass them, but this lateral piece continues to be problematic, there continues to be a lack of consensus on it, and so I would suggest to my colleagues, we are best to remove that from the bill, we vote the bill on the two parts that we all have agreed on, the council, the bargaining units, the administration, and we come back with another bill, whether it's through bargaining or whether it is through another piece of legislation in front of this body that deals with this exact concern that the bargaining unit has raised and that it is appropriate to be in front of the council. So I move the amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Would the administration like a minute to contemplate?
Madam Chair, I would just point out that hiring laterals is a critical recruitment tool for our department. I believe we're about, between 50 and 70 under our fully authorized positions. Laterals, when we bring them in from other counties, they don't require the extensive training and onboarding that new recruits and cadets do require. They're a critical part of maintaining our staffing levels. So, to disincentivize laterals is not something that we would be in favor of.
Mr. Volkey?
To be clear, we're not attempting to disincentivize laterals. We're just taking something out of the code, well, strike that. We're taking something out of the bill that doesn't currently exist in the code, that you all are trying to add to the code, and that there has not been consensus on what to do with it. That's what this amendment does.
I don't see any further discussion on Amendment Number Four. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Four. Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
And Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number Four has been adopted. With the failure of that amendment, this bill is up for vote? No? Amendment Number Four was adopted, so it will come back, amended it on February 20th. Sorry, sorry. There's been a lot going on tonight. Okay.
Madam Chair, is, this may be a question for my colleague in the Third District. When it comes to, when it comes to your statement, if I may?
Go ahead.
Just wanted to make a comment. Is, is your intent to bring back legislation when it comes to address the purchasing agreement with the unions as well? You want to come back with legislation with that?
Either I will, or the administration will.
Sure.
But somebody's going to come back with it to address this issue. My point is not to take this off the table into perpetuity. It's to take it off the table right now because it doesn't seem to be a consensus.
Sure.
So, my apologies. Bill Number 93-23 will be heard on February 20th, 2024. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1-24. Bill Number 124, An Ordinance Concerning Public Safety, Animal Care and Control Potentially Dangerous, Dangerous, and Vicious Animals. This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt, when your colleagues are settled, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Captain Jeff Adams, who oversees animal control, falls under his supervision, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. As you know, over the past several years, Anarundel County has enacted a number of laws aimed at addressing public safety when it comes to animals. And just to run through the list real quick, because I have it here, there was Bill 5917, which was Lilo's Law in 2017. There was Bill 5018 related to tethering of animals. There was Bill 7518 regarding the impoundment of domesticated animals. There was Bill 9018 regarding vicious animals, and Bill 8920 regarding the Animal Care and Control Commission. This bill makes some further changes to the law. For one, it amends the criteria for designating an animal as potentially dangerous, dangerous, or vicious. It establishes the process for reconsideration of a potentially or danger, potentially dangerous or dangerous animal order. It authorizes the Police Department's Animal Care and Control Agency to waive the redemption, adoption, spay, and neuter fees. It also amends certain animal license fees in second and subsequent years that they are issued, and it requires owners to pay specified costs that are associated with the care of their seized and surrendered animals in cruelty cases. I know there are a number of amendments coming. We'll discuss those at the appropriate time, but until then, we're happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion on Bill Number 1-24 at this time? Mr. Volkey?
I just want to say, it's great to be back on a chum-chum bill, in honor of my former councilman from District Two, who would be proud. Thank you.
To be clear, that's not exactly what this bill is about, but we don't need to go backwards in time. If there's no discussion at this time, I know we have several amendments on this bill. We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 1-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool? Yes, we did, Madam Chair, members of the council. There were two submissions. Everyone here should have received an email. Those submissions are included in that summary that is posted online and will be added to the meeting record. Thank you. We do have people signed up to speak. I will figure out who they are in just a second. Those that signed up in advance, we have Mr. Ed Evans, Chris Weinstein, Lauren Kessiak... Oh, sorry. Sorry, Kesslak, sorry. Joshua Stiver-Stivers and Kim Greco.
Good evening.
You have the floor. You have two minutes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Most of you have received the commission's input, probably ad nauseam, but I think it's well worth it, especially the amping up of the levels of proof for potentially dangerous, dangerous, and then vicious. I want the council to keep in mind that if a dog is labeled vicious, it's a death sentence. Okay? They remain in custody of the animal control, and if nothing happens, they are put to death. On a personal note, me as a citizen, I would like to see the language that was in the bill. I don't know whether it's been taken out or not, but in the reconsideration, where it said, "Except for those monikers, potentially dangerous, dangerous, and vicious," that you can't reconsider, go for reconsideration for that, I'd like that excluded, because that is the reason, that is 99 and 99% why someone would ask for reconsideration. They don't want that moniker on their animal. As far as the payments go, I don't, I'm okay for the, the payment, working together with the owner for payment if they're having a hardship. I do not agree with that as a person for someone that abuses an animal. I've seen enough. I have seen dogs stabbed. I've seen cats set on fire. I have seen horses and livestock starved to death. Enough is enough. They didn't give those animals a chance. I don't think you should give the animal abuser a chance.
Thank you, sir.
Pardon me?
That was your time?
Oh.
Sorry.
Can I, can I say something else, real quick? Ms. Ledbetter had a, an amendment. 10 thumbs up on that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
That's it.
Chris Weinstein?
Yes, hello. My name is Chris Weinstein, 216 Long Point Road, Crowesville. I am the president of Friends of Anarundel County Animal Care and Control, the nonprofit created by shelter volunteers to help the pets at the county's animal shelter. Currently, Animal Care and Control cannot require pet owners who have been charged with animal neglect or cruelty to pay for the cost of their pets at the shelter while their cases crawl through the justice system. This means that there's no incentive for an abusive owner to surrender a pet until their case is resolved. Their innocent pets are stuck at the shelter, sometimes for years, before ultimately being given up once their owners finally are found guilty. In fact, the sentence imposed on these innocent animals is usually far stiffer than what their abusive owners ultimately receive. Marsala, for example, was a 120-pound dog who lived at the shelter for 918 days during the prolonged court case against his now-former owner. She finally pled guilty to animal cruelty and was given three years of unsupervised probation. In December, Marsala left the shelter with one of its rescue partners and now lives happily in a home many states away. If this cost-of-care bill had been in effect, it is unlikely he would have been forced to spend, first spend more than two and a half years at the shelter. As our treasurer will explain, we also support a code change to allow redemption fees for stray pet to be waived if it's in the best interest of the pet and the shelter for the pet to be reunited with its owner. Our board opposes this bill's extreme requirements for declaring a dog vicious, especially the requirement for an eyewitness or recording of the attack. Surely, the proof needed to declare a dog vicious should not exceed the proof needed to convict a person of murder. We defer to the Animal Welfare Council regarding how to best improve this portion of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Kesslak.
My name is Lauren Kesslak, and I want to talk to you tonight about my dogs Ezra and Lily. Ezra and Lily were rottweilers in protective custody for nearly two years as part of a neglect and cruelty case, spent the majority of it in the shelter. During that time, Ezra developed lymphoma, terminal cancer, in August 2021, or after, shortly after I started volunteering. She was a great dog, and I felt compelled to take her home with me for one last weekend because they didn't give her very long to live. We're talking weeks, days, maybe, and the court didn't allow her to be euthanized for compassionate reasons. That one long, last weekend turned into four months, and I think that love might have extended her life. She likely never lived in a home. She was fascinated by everyday objects. We had pancakes on Sundays. She watched football with us. She frequently stole my dad's sandwiches. She was my dog Sydney's best friend and the best dog I ever had. She passed away peacefully on December 5th, 2021, but she was very painfully sick in the end, and I watched her slowly waste away. Her body sat in the freezer for five more months as evidence, until I could have her cremated and bring her back home with me, the only home she ever had. And the only reason we were able to let her go with love instead of suffering anymore is because Robin fought so hard for that dog and for so many other animals in her care. This dog was my first rottweiler and first, and made me fall in love with the breed. I then fostered and adopted Victoria, another one of the dogs who I've renamed Lily. Please consider adopting the cost-of-care measure and help prevent this from happening again to another Ezra. The people who bear the financial and emotional costs for these animals are the shelter staff, the volunteers, the taxpayers, not the abusive or neglectful owners. And it's time that they pay their bills or give the animals up to people who do care. Thank you.
Joshua Stivers?
I'm Stivers. I'm the 75 Levenmorean Drive, Hanover. I'm the treasurer of Friends of Anarundel County Animal Care and Control, the nonprofit, as mentioned by Chris, created by shelter volunteers to help the shelters' homeless pets. Anarundel County currently does not have the option to waive fees owners must pay when they come to the shelter to reclaim their accidentally stray pets. This prevents many worthy lower-income owners from being reunited with their beloved animals, not being able to give pets back to good owners, particularly unfortunate when the shelter's cages are at or near capacity, as they often are. Additionally, the money from these fees doesn't actually benefit the shelter, but instead transfers to the county's general fund. Shelter volunteers have paid many redemption fees for owners over the years, either out of their own pockets or through our nonprofit. We pay these fees when the shelter supervisors tell us they believe it is in the best interest of the pet and the shelter for the animal to be reunited with its owner. In two recent cases, we paid for a kitten to go home with its owner who had lost most of his possessions in a serious car crash, and for a dog to be released to a man who had been mugged and badly beaten while walking the dog. In both cases, officers had brought the pet to the shelter when the person with it was hospitalized. Although it's gratifying to see the happiness of both owners and pets when they're reunited, we'd much rather spend our limited funds in other ways, such as for the specialized vet care for badly injured homeless animals. Please modify the county code so that animal redemption fees can be waived at the supervisor's discretion. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Greco?
Kim Greco, 1474 Shot Town Road, Annapolis, Maryland. I am a professional dog trainer, and I just wanted to read through this bill just to understand some of the changes that were coming or up for voting. I had a few, probably, I felt nitpicky, but also pretty important things to point out. In the section of the bill, under cruelty, so page four, then 12-4901, the, the letter "I" talks about care for seized or surrendered animals, and it does say that an animal seized or surrendered to the agency under this section shall be maintained or humanely euthanized if unable to be maintained by the agency at the expense of the owner. But just a few lines down after that, it talks about the cost of care, the cost of care necessary for medical care, including necessary humane euthanasia as determined by a licensed veterinarian. I kind of felt like those two pieces were a little bit contradictory, but also misleading, where one, it says that euthanasia is determined by a licensed vet, the other talks about it being potentially by the agency. So I do feel like some of those types of things just need to get a little bit polished to make sure that it's clear, because obviously, in situations like this, there's already enough emotion happening in the rest of the cases that we don't need the code to be ambiguous in any sense of who's going to make that kind of determination of what's going to happen to an animal. The other piece I had a, not a concern with, but I just wanted to mention, this is again under the cruelty case, talking about if the owner does not make the payment in the timeframe set forth, this is at line 54, 55, it does say that the animal is deemed unwanted and shall become property of the county as of the day after any missed payment. And we're talking about cruelty cases, and if that person is in fact guilty of cruelty, the first person to say, like, they don't get their dog back, but they're not guilty, they're not guilty yet. They're still, it's up for, they haven't been...
Thank you.
Proven guilty. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone out here in the audience who would like to speak on Bill 1-24 at this time? This panel is dismissed. If there's anyone else in the audience, you come forward now, please. Thank you, ma'am. State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. Sandra Salvatore. I'm at 721 Red Cedar Road, Annapolis, Maryland. I agree with all the previous panelists' comments for the most part. What I am asking the panel to consider is some opportunities for issues regarding perception of how people perceive dogs. I am a proud owner of pit bulls, and they get mistreated, they get misrepresented. People look at them and go, "My God, my dog, my pit bulls, the sweetest dog on the planet would lick you to death," like 99.9% of them are. So, as I read the bill, one of the kind of wording that kind of piques my interest is, for example, on page two, paragraph three, "While at large, chases or approaches person," this has to do with the designation in the first place. Somebody can say, "Oh, they were aggressive." And the problem is, most people don't even know if a dog's really aggressive or not. A lot of people may perceive, they see a pit bull running towards them, let's say, let's say it just happens, like, they get out the door, they get out of the car, something happens, and they're running towards them. A person may go, "Oh, my God, that feels aggressive to them," because they've got this media-driven fear that's not really based on fact, and they may perceive, and maybe they file something saying, "Oh, my God, the dog was aggressive." That, and that's the problem I have, is that there, it's, there's no definition of the word aggressive. There, if you look at the people who are on this panel and people who work with, and I do a lot of animal rescue work, as well, I work with the SPCA, I'm a citizen lobbyist with the SPCA, the Humane Society, and HSUS as well. So, that's my concern, is that, that wording, aggressive, the, the fact that somebody could file something, and there's no real clear definition, and no way for professionals who deal with these breeds to be able to articulate, going on that he was just being animated, let's say. So I just, I'm concerned about that, because then everything else falls from that, right? You've got, I'm sorry, just real quick, I'm just...
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm concerned about the reconsideration and the five, to change from the 12-year to the 12-month to five-year. I feel like five, the five-year was capricious...
Thank, thank you.
And specious. And specious, and I keep it, recommend keeping it at 12 months. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The public hearing on Bill 1-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 1-24.
Bill number 124, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Animal Care and Control, Potentially Dangerous, Dangerous and Vicious Animals.
Ms. Radvian.
Thank you. I really just want to say thank you so much to all the folks who testified, all the folks on this panel up here. I don't know how, to me, the issues are so deeply emotional, vicariously through my sis, well, I just, I was going to say a family member, my sister. I've been on both sides of the animal equation, having a pit bull who would lick you to death with, you know, love and kisses, and also have an animal who, you know, has been the victim of a dog who, you know, took a little chomp at its leg. So I just want to say thank you for the work that you do. I just, I feel like your hearts must be twisted and not half the time hearing the stories that you do, so thank you, because I imagine that's very hard. Just thank you. And to the Animal Matters Commission.
Mr. Hunt, did you want, before we enter into amendments, did we have any? All right, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number one.
Amendment number one, this amendment changes the due date for the estimated cost of care from five days from the date of a notice to 45 days of a date of notice.
This is an administration amendment. It does what it says it does. Is there a motion to adopt? Is there a second? Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It does do what it says it does. This came about as feedback received from both the Animal Matters Commission and the Animal Welfare Commission.
If there is any further discussion on Amendment number one, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number one.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one has been adopted.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number two.
Amendment number two, this amendment provides that the costs of care may be collected as part of a payment plan.
Ms. Ledbetter, this is your amendment.
Thank you, ma'am. I believe the county executive was listed first.
Oh, my apologies, yes. Sorry.
I think we had the same amendment.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt Amendment number two?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we need any discussion on Amendment number two? From the sponsors? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number two.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number two has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number three.
Amendment number three, this amendment changes the limit for filing a petition to reconsider a potentially dangerous or dangerous animal order from no more than once in a 12-month period to a five-year period, and adds certain criteria for revising conditions of an order.
Ms. Ledbetter, this is your amendment.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you very much. In your defense, we were both on the sheet on that last one, so. This amendment actually was born out of hearing the same concern from two different groups, which I, who I believe actually approached this issue from two different perspectives. On one hand, I spoke, had spoken to advocates who were involved in the original Lilo's law, and they had concerns about the provision that allowed the repetition within a 12-month period and that there were no conditions. And then also had heard from the Animal Welfare Council, with essentially outlining in detail the solution to what was a shared concern. When I see two different groups coming from two different places with a shared concern, to me, that often speaks to an opportunity to take action, because there's some consensus there. And I thought that this, this made sense. It addressed the idea that the 12 months was too short of a timeline, and it put some very basic conditions in place for whether or not that reconsideration should be granted. Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Radvian, second.
The administration like to comment on this amendment?
Just that we're, we are comfortable with this amendment.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the sponsor. All right, so, I want to make sure I understand it correctly before we vote on it. It seems like it is changing the reconsideration period that's currently kept at no more than once every 12 months, and saying no more than once every five years.
Correct.
And then it is adding these other components that you have here that try to give some sort of a criteria on what would be considered with respect to a reconsideration.
Correct.
Okay. How did you land on the five years versus the 12-month period? I get why you're doing the criteria, and I do think that's a very helpful piece to this, but how did you land on the five years as opposed to 12 months?
Based on the understanding that's been provided to me of animal behavior. It can take quite a while to train to create new habits, and from, you know, those that I spoke to, there was a concern that every year would not allow sufficient time for that to happen.
May I ask a follow-up?
Yes.
Thank you. Captain Adams, I know that you are a police officer and not necessarily versed in animal behavior. However, you're the only one up here, so I'm going to throw this to you and see if you have an answer for it. Do you have any, any sense based on your experience working in Animal Care and Control as to the time it takes to potentially change the behavior of an animal that has been deemed one thing and now is being asked for reconsideration to something else? And if you want to phone a friend, you can. I see, you have a friend in the back who might be able to help.
Captain Adams from the County Police Department, I cannot answer that question for you.
Can I ask a question of the sponsor or the table? The, the bill with the 12-month period, it's just an opportunity to file for a petition. It doesn't mean it's going to be granted.
That's correct. And actually, when the petition is filed, the burden is on the individual filing the petition, right? So if the designation has already been made and the conditions have been imposed, the evidence weighs against them, and they would have to overcome that evidentiary standard and prove that change in conditions is warranted. So again, yes, you're correct. It's, it's only petitioning for reconsideration of conditions, it's not granting the reconsideration.
So, so if someone petitions for the reconsideration, and it is not granted, they have to wait another five years before they can petition again?
Under this amendment, yes.
That seems a little excessive, but, I don't know, Mr. Smith?
I think I was kind of going down the same, thank you, Madam Chair. I have a dog that has been designated, I don't, this is just in theory, that has been designated a dangerous animal. And I, the owner, am not pleased with that. So I am going to, in six months, petition that the county reconsider that designation, right? That's what I'm going to, right? Now, if you deny me during that request to change that designation, you're saying I can't come back to, again, until five years after that designation, or after that denying, denying of the reconsideration.
So, to be clear, there are two separate things going on here. There's the designation of the dog as being potentially dangerous or dangerous, and then there are the conditions that are imposed as part of that designation, right? Like, the dog has to be muzzled when it's being walked, you have to build a fence around your yard, you have to kennel the dog. So, in the law as it currently exists, there is an appeal process to appeal the designation. So that, that already exists. What this bill is establishing is a process that does not currently exist at all, to petition to reconsider those conditions that are imposed on the dog. It's not giving you the ability to petition to reconsider the designation of the dog as a potentially dangerous or dangerous dog five years down the road. It's giving you the ability to petition to have those conditions changed that were imposed on the dog.
Right, and so I would have to have those conditions for five years at the next opportunity to...
Correct.
And, and to the sponsor, you said, was the five years born out of someone's recommendation from one of those sides? That's it?
It was a suggestion directly from the Animal Welfare Council.
And their recommendation was five years? Wow.
I believe it's an email that came, we may have all received, I know I...
Yeah, yeah, I did read that one.
A lot comes in, I recognize.
We have many council members ready to ask questions. Are we, Ms. Ledbetter? I'm not sure who is next. Oh.
I was answering.
I've already asked, I can wait.
Okay, Ms. Radvian.
Thank you. I just want to clarify that the 12 months that's currently in the bill, it's not a one-time 12 months, it's once every 12 months. So if a person had not requested, you know, reconsideration for the conditions, you know, if they had let three years pass by, for example, they could still request reconsideration for the conditions, even with the 12-month provision, because it would, it would only have been once in way more than 12 months, it would have been once in 36 months. Is that my understanding correctly?
You are, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
There's a, I can appreciate the amendment, and I'm trying to get there, but there is a large difference between 12 months and five years. We do have a professional animal trainer in the audience. If the Madam Chair would allow any insight into how long it typically takes to retrain, retrain.
Well, I appreciate that, but the, this is about the conditions set upon the dog after they've been, this is, this is to reconsider the conditions placed, like, muzzling the dog, putting the dog in the yard, blah, 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 blah. So it's not necess...
I believe it's also changing the period of time from 12 months to five years.
Correct. I'm just saying that it's not necessarily to reclassify the dog, it's about the conditions placed on the dog after they've been deemed dangerous.
Correct.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Would it not be fair, though, to say that an animal trainer might be sort of aware of, you know, how much time would take to justify new conditions, you know, for the animal to develop new behavior that might say, okay, this dog is okay, to not wear a muzzle or whatever?
So I, I'm hesitating, because we have lots of people in the audience that probably think they have a lot to say on the topic, and it's not typically the way we conduct our business. You know, I know our, Ms. Catlett is in the audience, I don't know if she has any, she's not at the table, though. Did the administration have an interest in bringing Ms. Catlett up? Oh, okay.
I offered they could phone a friend, and they said no, so.
Well, I mean, you know, this is not typically how we conduct our business.
We're allowed to. But it's, you're the chair.
I am, I am. Again, Ms. Ledbetter, did you have? Mr. Volkey.
No, I'm good.
If I may, Madam Chair, I would just point out, again, so, having owned dogs for most of my life at this point, every dog is different, and their behavior can be different, and how much modification and how much training it takes to train a dog varies on each dog. I have, I grew up with a black lab, German shepherd mix who it took a day to train, and I have, I had dogs after that that were never fully trained or just didn't listen well. So I guess my point is that, you know, again, it's, it's, the behavior is, in changing animal behavior, is dependent on each dog, and that's what the reconsideration hearing is for, and that's where the pet owner, when they petition for reconsideration of conditions, can bring forward that evidence.
I appreciate that. Mr. Volkey.
All right, fine, just my final thought. I like part of this, and I don't like the other part. I like the condition, or the, the criteria. I think that's important. I like that. I don't like the five years, it's too much. So I'm going to have to vote no on the amendment, but I will support you if you bring this back at the next meeting with the criteria. I'll absolutely be there.
May I respond, Madam Chair?
Of course.
Ever so briefly, I appreciate it, and part of the process of bringing amendments is to have discussion, so that we can learn where everyone is standing, so I very much appreciate it, and, and the feedback.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you. Just as a matter of record, I did not run this by ethics, but I did several years ago have an attack case that my dog was attacked, we went through the whole Board of Appeals process, so I've been through this process, I know how challenging and how emotional it is, but just wanted to state that for the record.
If there's no further discussion on Amendment number three, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number three.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
One in the affirmative, six in the negative. Amendment number three has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number four.
Amendment number four, this amendment requires the agency to determine euthanasia is necessary in addition to a veterinarian.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This addresses one of the issues brought up by members of the public in the testimony portion of the bill. Move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does the administration have a position on Amendment number four?
I do want to thank this sponsor for reaching out last week about a few different questions, and this amendment was addressing one of those questions, and we're comfortable with this amendment.
Is there any discussion on Amendment number four? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number four.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number four has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number five.
Amendment number five, this amendment allows the agency to extend the due dates for payment of cost of care for a seized or surrendered animal in certain types of extraordinary circumstances.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Understanding that these cases are brought with emotion, and oftentimes considered family members, or in some cases, not, but if a life-changing circumstances were to happen in that period, I thought it should be allowed for the agency to review and grant an extension. Move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does the administration have a position on Amendment number five?
We're comfortable with this one as well.
Is there any discussion on Amendment number five? Seeing no lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number five.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number five has been adopted.
Thank you. Bill number 1-24 will be heard as amended on February 2024, February 20th, 2024. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 2-24.
Bill number 224, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Requirements for Conditional Uses Self-Service Storage Facilities Outside Storage of Vehicles.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Bill 2-24 is actually my bill. The purpose of this bill is to allow increased flexibility for the outside storage of vehicles as an accessory use. This only applies to W1-zoned self-service storage facilities, and only if they are on a principal arterial road, which is our highest classification, except for a freeway. The outdoor vehicles must be stored at the side or rear of the lot, not in the front. The vehicle storage has to be an accessory use to the... The vehicle storage has to be an accessory use to the self-service storage building, and landscaping must accompany the landscape manual. That's my bill. Does the administration have anything to say as we work together on it?
Just that we appreciate the sponsor working with us together on it, and we're fine with this bill. Or is the council to adopt it?
Is there any discussion at this time? We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 2-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool? We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 2-24? Please come up to the table and have a seat. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 2-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2-24. Bill Number 2-24, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning: Requirements for Conditional Uses Self-Service Storage Facilities Outside Storage of Vehicles. Is there any questions of my colleagues, the administration? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 2-24. Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 2-24 has been passed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 3-24. Bill Number 3-24, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning: Maritime Districts Neighborhood Marina Zoning District. Ms. Fiedler, this is your bill, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This bill is an effort to close the gap between MA1 and MA2 in our zoning code. There is a large difference between the two, leaving existing small neighborhood, although it's not in the code yet, marinas kind of in no man's land when they're looking to do upgrades or improvements to their marina, but their zoning restricts them from moving forward with those. I want to thank the administration planning and zoning for working extensively on this. Members of the public, I know there's some folks here to testify this evening, I want to make it clear that this bill, if it passes, does not automatically change any property in the county to MA1B. It merely offers an option during the rezoning process, and the council has the final authority to grant that zoning. And with that, I look forward to hearing from members of the public and the administration.
Mr. Hunt?
Just, I want to thank the sponsor for working with us. I know she's been working with OPZ and Office of Law on these amendments that we'll discuss a little later, so appreciate it.
If there's no discussion at this time, we'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 3-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool? Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council, there were four submissions. Everyone here should have received an email with those submissions. They are included in that summary that's posted online and will be added to the meeting record. We do have two speakers signed up for the public hearing, Mr. Blake Wilson and Amanda Kopp. You may come forward at this time. We do have six seats. If there's anyone else in the audience that is interested in speaking on Bill 3-24, you can come up at this time as well. Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. I'm Blake Wilson, and I live at 127 Club Road, which is in Pasadena on Rock Creek. We live in the Patasco Boating and Social Association. It's been there since 1893, founded by German singing group, and my wife's family goes back to that original year, how about that? But I'm not going to read my remarks tonight, you all have a copy of it, I'm just gonna give you a brief summary. I want to thank Ms. Fiedler for recognizing the issue with the maritime code. There are serious flaws in it, one of those, and she has addressed it for small marinas, and that's a wonderful step forward. Even though this doesn't fix the problem in our area, where we have a larger marina pending rezoning, it sets a pathway for, we hope, council to recognize that this is an issue that also needs to be addressed for larger marinas. The issue is really simple. The current zoning code allows bars and restaurants in every single commercial marina category. So if a piece of property is going to be zoned for a marina, even if it's in the middle of an entirely residential neighborhood, as the site near us is, it would allow in any of the categories available the development of bars or restaurants, which certainly change the character of an entirely residential community. Ms. Fiedler's bill fixes this for small marinas, and Ms. Fiedler, thank you, because that's drawn attention to this need. But now, if we can carry it to the next step, it will need a new bill because Ms. Fiedler's bill had to address a lot of issues that are unique to small marinas, but can be fixed simply. Take the current MA2, make it MA2B, and simply require a special exception for the approval of bars, restaurants, and that's it.
Thank you, sir.
So I hope they'll do it before comprehensive zoning takes place. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kopp?
Hello, my name is Amanda Kopp, here representing the absence of Alan Strahan on behalf of Rockview Beach Revieror Isles Community Improvement Association. I want to commend the enormous effort by Councilwoman Fiedler's bill in showing unwavering support for Bill 324 as it addresses crucial issues in our community. However, it is imperative to emphasize the needs further from county council for a robust remodeled maritime zoning structure, not only in small marinas, but as well in large-scale marinas looking to operate in residential areas to ensure sustainable development, community well-being, and effective land use. Further support for a thoughtful rezoning remodel will contribute to long-term urban planning and a harmonious living environment for residents like myself and so many of my neighbors who couldn't be here tonight. Implementing a comprehensive zoning model for residential areas under Bill 324 will foster neighborhood cohesion by delineating clear boundaries for various land uses. This approach can help, excuse me, to keep and enhance property values, reduce potential conflicts, and provide a framework for responsible growth here in our community. After all, we all want to see the positive impact in our communities. By realigning zoning codes for growth, we can mitigate the environmental impact of urbanization, fostering biodiversity, and creating healthier ecosystem. This forward-thinking approach not only safeguards our natural heritage that us Marylanders are so proud of, but also enhances the overall aesthetic appeal of residential neighborhoods, promoting a sustainable and harmonious coexistence within our community. This place we call home every day as a reminder to what is at stake for us here in the community. It is imperative that council members need not remind for flexibility in zoning regulations concerning marinas today, as these were set many years ago, ensuring their continued operation without compromising current living standards. By acknowledging the unique needs of maritime activities, such as those associated with marinas, we can strike a balance between supporting waterfront businesses and maintaining the quality of life for residents near and far. This flexibility should be carefully crafted, and I repeat that, carefully crafted to address the specific requirements of marinas while upholding environmental sustainability and minimizing potential disruptions. Maintaining the integrity of residential areas is paramount, and it's crucial not to overproduce in these spaces. In conclusion, should council include provisions that prioritize responsible development, ensuring new constructions align with safety standards and harmonize with the existing environment, which helps strike a balance, please.
Thank you, Ms. Kopp. Thank you for signing up in advance. We have three folks that have come up from the audience. Ma'am?
Yes, hi. Good afternoon. Can you hear me? My name is Alma Henson-Darden. I live at 309 Forest Beach Road, and that's in the Brownsville Woods community. I am the president of the community association and have been for a long time. Brownsville Woods and Orchard Beach Road have no curves or sidewalks, and they're... The roads are a tight community road. Orchard Beach Road, you can only use, come down one car at a time. Okay, we in Brownsville Woods does not need another heavy business in our community like canvales at the end of the opposite of this road. I live on Forest Beach Road, and you know canvales is on the other end of Forest Beach Road, okay? It will bring in increasing traffic speeding up and down our roads. For the last five years or more, a new community has been built, and contractors are still building homes at the end of Mount Laurel Lane, located at the end of Brownsville Road. That has already increased traffic, although we are a residential area. It has increased more people using Brownsville Road to jog, walk, and riding bikes of all kinds of young children walking to the athletic field for activities. I've lived in Brownsville Woods most of my life, and on Forest Beach Road, and I have experienced high traffic volumes every day from canvales and specifically during the warm weather months. Even, I've even observed large boats going down Brownsville Woods, Forest Beach Road to other marinas at the end of Forest Beach Road. I have experienced directly automobiles running in my yard. I've had, I have had three automobiles run in my yard, taking out two trees, one large boat, bolter, and now I'm afraid that the next time they're gonna come through my house.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Sir?
Do, how do I turn this thing on?
You're good.
I'm on, okay.
You're live.
My name's Carl Jackson, I live on Orchard Beach Road, and I'm here to support Amanda Fiedler's bill. I think it basically tries to draw a line between the kinds of ghastly overuse represented by my fellow neighbor here, where if you attach restaurants and bars and build large marinas in residential areas, you will destroy them. And the good thing about Representative Fiedler's bill is that she tries to draw a line. Now, any undertaking, even the best undertaking, can be abused if there's a relentless pressure of commercialization to try and upgrade from MA1B to MA2 to even higher designations. And so the only reservation I have about the Fiedler bill is its potential abuse in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Minahan?
Thank you, Matt Minahan, Edgewater, Maryland. Thank you again for your work on this, Ms. Fiedler, and working, in particular, your conversations with GAN on this. We think this is an important bill, it fills the yawning gap between MA1 and MA2. But there's still, after this bill, there's still a big gap left. Right now, MA2 allows full-blown marinas, heavy equipment, restaurants, bars, hotels can all be built in MA2. And there ought to be a category, there needs to be a category for a commercial marina, heavy equipment, but no restaurants, no bars, no hotels. And so we're encouraging the council to come back to this question. If you can get to it before comprehensive zoning, that's great, if not, please come back to it at a later time. We need a category, I mean, there's nothing inherently marina-like about a restaurant and a bar, and they don't belong in some of these zoning categories. So maybe it's MA2B, maybe it's some other thing, but this gap needs to be filled here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Panel's dismissed. Is there last call for testimony, public testimony on Bill 3-24? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing... Oh, excuse me. Oh, excuse me.
Hi, I'm Linda Elian, I'm at 1616 Orchard Beach Road, Annapolis. I live on one of the communities where there has been an application placed to upzone to an MA2 on a property that's less than an acre. It's been moved forward, shockingly, when the rules haven't really been followed, and I appreciate Ms. Fiedler's attempt to work with our community to try to find the middle ground. I think it's important to mention the history of how many of these residential non-conforming use marinas came to be. And when you, in our grandparents' days, much of Annapolis, much of Anarundale County, the waterfronts were just summer resorts, summer homes, or they're little havens for fishermen. Our little community was actually a working waterman haven, and they would live there, and they let some of their fellow watermen keep their boats on their docks. And this has been going on since probably the early 1900s. I know on our property, our dock was in continuous use since 1940s, by starting with watermen. And usually, when somebody comes to my marina to ask for a spot, my first question, how often do you use your boat? And if they say rarely, then you're in. We want to keep this neighborhood quiet, and I think most of us that live on these little neighborhoods, especially if there's a outlier who's trying to upzone to an MA2, they're kind of shocked because they are quiet. People have retired there, people have young children there, sometimes were families with young children, and it's, I think this is an important gap filler to prevent an MA2 in a residential spot, and actually, spot zoning is what we're oftentimes talking about here.
Thank you.
I think this is an important gap filler, and I thank you for that. You've worked hard with many of us, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And thank you all for what you do.
The first and third Mondays of the month, except in August. The public hearing on Bill 3-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 3-24. Bill Number 3-24, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning: Maritime Districts Neighborhood Marina Zoning District. I know there are... Are we prepared to go right into amendments? Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One. Amendment Number One, this amendment changes outside and dry storage of watercraft from a permitted use to a conditional use in the Neighborhood Marina Zoning District and sets forth the condition for the use. Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the way that the bill is currently written, there is the potential for multiple boats to be stored on land, and that was not the intent of the bill, but also recognizing that these are neighborhood marinas, and the bill allows for residential dwellings that anyone living on the property may have a small kayak, canoe. So this amendment allows for limited dry storage, so motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Ledbetter, second.
Does the administration have a position on Amendment Number One?
We're comfortable with this amendment.
Is there any further discussion on Amendment Number One? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One. Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number One has been adopted. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two. Amendment Number Two, this amendment modifies the criteria of the MA1B Neighborhood Marina District. Ms. Fiedler, this is also your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. After discussions with OPZ, this is a word beautification amendment, motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Ledbetter, second.
Does the administration have a position on this amendment?
Yes, we're fine with it, and we would encourage to work the phrase "word beautification" in more often.
I wasn't sure I heard that correctly, but now that you've repeated it, I'm like, okay, that's a new one. Is there any further discussion on Amendment Number Two? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two. Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer? Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent, Amendment Number Two has been adopted. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three. Amendment Number Three, this amendment removes offices and administration facilities necessary for operating the marina as a permitted use in the Neighborhood Marina Zoning District. Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This use was inadvertently left in the bill after discussions. It does allow technically, the way the bill is written, for a third structure on a property to be an office, or an office building of some... on a property to be an office comp, or an office building of some sort, even if it's small. So by removing, um, the permitted use, that could not happen with the caveat that a home occupation as a conditional use could exist in one of the dwelling units. So if the marina needs a little bit of office space, that is covered in the conditional use of home occupation. Move to adopt.
Is there a second? The administration?
We're good.
Are there, is there any, oh, Ms. Rodvian.
I just want to clarify, so if it were a standalone office, not part of a dwelling, would not be permitted, but if it were part of a dwelling, thumbs up?
Yes, the idea is to keep it with the true residential feel.
Okay.
And not an office building.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Volkey.
What if it was 140 square foot shed, no permit, because you can build that outside the critical area, because you got far enough away from the water, and you keep clipboards inside? Seems violative of this.
I don't know that folks would want to work at those conditions, but...
Fair enough. All right. You don't think any of these small marinas that you're talking about are going to need any kind of office space?
They are quite small. 20 slips, no other real, uh, commercial use.
Okay.
Ms. Fiedler? Nope. Gotcha. Madam Secretary, please, uh, call the roll on Amendment Number Three.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment Number Three has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Four.
Amendment Number Four, this amendment modifies the condition, conditional use requirements for a neighborhood marina.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This amendment came out of discussions, um, with Office of Planning and Zoning and also the community. Some confusion was created by having the permitted use of Dwelling Unit One in the use chart, so this amendment removes that, but then replaces it with the language in the conditions that, um, in addition to a marina's caretaker's residence, dwelling unit, a neighborhood marina may have a single-family detached dwelling unit, and also the, uh, additional, uh, conditions listed in the amendment. Move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Let better second.
Does the administration have a position on Amendment Number Four?
We're comfortable with Amendment Four.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith?
Uh, and just, just to clarify it again, we're just creating a template that potentially could be used when we do, um, company zoning and small teams, right? So, it's not like it's changing any particular zoning map right now, even if this thing passes.
Correct.
Correct. I'm just putting it on the record again. All right, thank you.
Oh, Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. Um, this is a question for Ms. Fiedler. Um, how did you reach the 20-slip maximum?
That actually came from folks who are in very similar circumstances. Um, some have 10 slips, some have 35, and if at any point in the future, as a non-conforming use, uh, they want to do some kind of upgrade to their, or not even an upgrade, even just replacing the, the pier, they have to no longer be a non-conforming use. So trying to find a number of slips that some are gonna lose, some may gain, um...
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Seeing no more lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Four.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment Number Four has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Five.
Amendment Number Five, this amendment removes the conditions for a dwelling unit marina caretaker's residence.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this is essentially an effort to create a minimum, um, of at least one-half acre, acre for a caretaker's residence. Setting a low end. Move to adopt.
Is there a second? The administration have a position on Amendment Number Five?
We're comfortable with this one as well.
Is there any further discussion on Amendment Number Five? Madam Secretary?
Can I, can I have a question?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Okay.
This is similar to my last one. How'd you reach a half acre? Because that actually seems pretty large. I could imagine you might, you know, something might be worked out that's smaller, so...
Sure. Um, it came out of concerns, um, in discussing with the community, you know, you have a very small lot, um, trying to keep the character of the surrounding community, um, if there is a parcel that is half acre or less, to have a dwelling unit, a single-family dwelling unit, and a caretaker's, um, residence, uh, it was just felt that it should be over a half acre.
Mr. Volkey.
That ADU might fit.
Oh, okay. Um, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Five.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Amendment Number Five has been adopted.
I'm watching you turn the page. Madam Secretary, please, uh, read Amendment Number Six.
Amendment Number Six, this technical amendment corrects several, several acronyms for the name of the new zoning district being created and an erroneous reference to a term.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank the Auditor's Office and Madam Secretary for bringing it to my attention that the bill is referring to MA1 dash, or MA dash 1B and MA1 dash B. This cleans that issue up. Move to adopt.
Is that okay with the administration? Is this, concur with the cleanup?
Yes, we concur with it. No, yeah.
Word beautification.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion on Amendment Number Six? Seeing no lights, Madam Sec, oh, no. Madam Secretary, please, uh, call the roll on Amendment Number Six.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Six has been adopted.
Bill, uh, Number 3-24 as amended will be heard again on February 20th, 2024. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 3-24.
Uh, Resolution Number 324, Resolution Amending Portions of Titles 1, 3, 4, and 5 of the Rules of Procedure of the County Council.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. This resolution is co-sponsored by myself, Ms. Rodvian, and Ms. Hummer. Around this time last year, this council took up the, uh, charge of modernizing and reforming our rules of procedure. With that, we broke into small work groups and divided up each title. As you know, this, uh, council works in the body of the whole, and we cannot, uh, so we worked in small groups, and this resolution is the result of those two groups, uh, recommendations for modernizations to Titles 1 through 6. We, um, some of the things brought forward were as simple as clarifying job titles, others were, um, more substantive. In Title 1, um, the group that looked at, uh, Titles 1, 3, and 5, um, proposed that a resolution, it would take a resolution to amend the, the rules of procedure, and it would require a vote of five members of the council. This also brought into our rules of procedure how we fill a vacancy in the office of the member of the county council, or the office of the county executive, um, and the filling of a vacancy in the office of a member of the Board of Education. We have, uh, brought in the procedure we used, I can't remember the year, that we filled a vacancy on the Board of Education, but it brings that procedure into our rules. Um, I'm happy to go through each of these individually. Uh, does anybody want to help me out as we go through each title? I guess not. Okay.
I'll be happy to share it with you if you want to.
Um, we do have some notes. The original, um, plan of, of, uh, action was to bring both of these resolutions to a work session next, uh, next week, and then have these resolutions brought before this body on February 20th. There was, um, an interest amongst some to tackle this tonight, so here we are. Um, are there any questions of my colleagues on Resolution 3-24?
Madam Chair, or Madam, I keep, oh, gone. Madam Chair, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, if you, if you would like, I mean, I'm still interested in, in specifically 3-24, uh, reviewing that at the, uh, the work session, because there's a lot, a lot of different things taking place in that. My own personal opinion, but just putting that out there. Thank you.
Um, okay, so, correct, there are a lot of things, uh, modernizations and things taking place in Resolution 3-24, but I would also agree that there are lots of things being brought forward in the Rules of Procedure changes to Resolution 4-24 that would warrant a work session, which is why I put it forward that way. Uh, but the council indicated earlier this evening that this was an important discussion to have tonight on these two resolutions. So is there a proposal to hold this resolution until, is that what you're proposing, or...
I'm just, I'm just saying that for this particular, uh, resolution, uh, if you want to deep dive into it in the work session, I'm certainly gonna be supportive of that.
But not Resolution 4-24?
No.
Gotcha. I think we're gonna proceed then with this resolution. Um, they, to me, the work of modernizing our rules is a collective work, and this body took pains to do that over many months, and, uh, I think we need to look at Title 1 through 6 as a whole. Ms. Rodvian, did you, I have Ms. Hummer and Ms. Rodvian.
I actually think you just said what I was thinking, that we really should be looking at these together.
Ms. Hummer.
Um, yes, so, last year, um, one of the signature things that Chairman Smith brought forward when he came on the council was the modernization of the rules, because we hadn't looked at for many months. Um, one of the things that this body, and we even heard it tonight from people who spoke, that we are often praised about is how well our, we get along up here, and how we work together. And we really did that in this, in the meetings we had about amending the rules. It was a very collaborative effort. We had two different groups that met for hours over months and tackled their sessions, and each group agreed on their proposed changes, and we brought it back, and the agreement back then, which was a year ago, was that it would all be brought forth to a work session so, because we can't work as a body in the whole unless we're in public. So it would be a work session, so we could have these discussions in public, and we could explain the, the procedure behind that. And I still believe that's the best way to do it, what we all agreed to a year ago. Um, this, this resolution, um, 324 incorporates all of the suggestions that the two groups a- agreed to put forward in their separate ones that we've combined together. It's, um, it's modernizing some language so that, for instance, we don't have to say yea and nay now. We can say, um, it doesn't have to be required to say yea and nay. Things don't have to be in typewritten form anymore. Some little things like that, but then we have some major things, such as the procedures that, um, how to fill a vacancy on the school board, um, how to have, the allowing for virtual meetings and virtual testimony that comes through. Some big things that are, um, important modernizations of our rules. And I would hope that all of my colleagues would support this work that we did together, um, and that would have that. Um, I would be fully supportive, um, of taking this to the work session to have further public discussion before it's brought to a vote next week, along with the other resolution, because as we said, we are com, we, we are looking at the rules as a whole, and, um, the second resolution that was brought forward, um, 424, it did not, did not come out of those, um, committees working together. So I think it's important that we, as a whole, have a discussion about that. So, um, but I would ask my colleagues to support 324 if we cannot agree to move both of these to a work session next time, because these are the recommendations that our committees brought forth together, working collaboratively for what is best for the body as a whole, not just today, because the rules of the council are for the integrity and the body of the whole for today and in the future for future council members, not just for the people sitting here. Thank you.
Uh, we heard, um, testimony earlier tonight. Um, I know there is a group, uh, in the county that is eager to see, uh, the rules, uh, modified, which would allow us to create systems for virtual or remote participation in meetings. I know that there is an eagerness of some to see that happen. That, uh, provision is updated in Section 4-113 of, uh, the rules. Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. So I think I was the one council member who was not part of either work group, and I think that was mainly just to scheduling. But just for my clarification, or for my clarification, I, I actually thought you guys did a fantastic job. Um, was there any, uh, was there any opposition to, you know, the changes that were, um, you know, agreed upon here, or is the, were these decisions pretty much unanimous?
Well, I can only speak for my small group, but we worked very well together. Uh, Mr. Volkey, Ms. Hummer, and I tackled Titles 1, 3, and 5, if my memory serves me right, correctly. Um, but the point of the meeting in small groups, so that we don't sit in a quorum, was to bring, um, modernizations and, and revisions to our rules, to a work session, so that the two groups could interact. Uh, with the work that was done, with the work, uh, the work group that tackled, uh, Titles 2, 4, and 6, those notes are incorporated in Resolution 3-24. There were no, um, at that time, there was no, uh, small work group, uh, discussions about Title 2, which is the, uh, main, um, uh, focus of Resolution 4-24. I would be happy to, uh, hold these two, um, resolutions until we can have a robust conversation about all six titles of our Rules of Procedure of this council, um, at our work session on the 13th, with a vote then on February 20th, if that is, um, what folks are interested in. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, to respond to Councilwoman Rodvian's question, so yes, we, we all did work in these small groups, and we did come up with agreements. The thing to keep in mind is, to my knowledge, there's never been a melding of those two groups, to where, like, one group saw what the other one did and the other saw. So this is kind of the first iteration of that. There were reports. I don't, I don't want to suggest that there weren't, there, but this is really the first holistic view of, here are all the changes. The other thing that I would just remind everyone on the council is, I pulled up in my calendar, and I believe the last rules meeting we had was April of last year, so it's been a while since this was something that this council has tackled. Um, I'm certainly, I want to continue the conversation on 324. I think by sponsorship, it's obvious, there's a consensus on 424. So with that, I would, I would make a motion at this point to hold 324 to the next meeting.
I'm gonna just take a deep breath for a minute. There's a motion to hold. There's a motion to hold.
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the role on the motion to hold Resolution 3-24. Is that a vote of five or four?
Four. That's a vote of four.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
And Ms. Pickard.
Absolutely not.
That's four in the affirmative, and three in the negative. So the motion to hold Resolution 3, the vote on Resolution 324 to the February 20th meeting has been adopted.
So Resolution 3-24 for the public will be discussed robustly at the work session on February 13th, and we'll have a public hearing, as previously scheduled, on February 20th, as is appropriate for such actions of this council. We will now take up Resolution 4-24. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 4-24.
Resolution 424, Resolution Amending Certain Sections of Title 2 of the Rules of Procedure of the County Council.
This resolution is sponsored by Mr. Smith, Mr. Volkey, Ms. Fiedler, and Ms. Ledbetter. Who will be taking charge this evening?
Madam Chair, I'll say that I definitely signed on for this resolution, essentially to just create a process, that was the focus of this, so that we can ensure that certain positions within the county council have feedback from the council members themselves on an annual basis with, with the positions that are impacted by this, this resolution. That was my intent behind this bill, it was for a specific reason, for a specific purpose, and that's why I signed on to it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, this, we're going to be tackling the Title 2 in this resolution. There are some significant changes to the rules of procedures brought forward tonight. We have not had an opportunity to work through this in a work session, or have a public hearing, as it was introduced just last meeting. I'd like to point out some things in this resolution that I think are going to be problematic to implement. One being that, as this council has three appointed officers, this amendment, this resolution strips out, repeals, Section 2-101, removing the paragraph that states that our county council officers work mostly independently, with general oversight of the chair, and will, they've stripped out that paragraph, and now replaces that with, three appointed officers will report to seven different council members with supervisory authority of all members of the council. So I asked one of the sponsors how they envision that working, as all seven of us will, if this passes, become supervisors, individual supervisors of three highly qualified officers of this council. My question is, since we have to meet in the body of the whole, we do not have standing committees, by charter, we cannot meet in closed session. So I'm asking the, someone of the four sponsors, how do you envision handling personnel matters with seven supervise, supervising three highly qualified officials?
I would argue that in Resolution 324, we can expand that to codify and clean up any issues that may have been created. This allows the, the slate to be reset, and so that's, that's my perception.
Well, I do have an amendment that cleans up these rules. If, if the sponsor, I will let my colleagues speak. I have several issues with the, the resolution as drafted, but Ms. Rodvian, I'll yield to you for the moment.
Thank you. I have very serious concerns about 4-24, in particular, because the six, my, my six colleagues, of course, like I said, every, everyone except me for my scheduling. I know I can be, I have a pretty tight schedule, as I know all of you do, but mine tends to be particularly inflexible. I'm particularly concerned that those changes that were made with the rules were made, you know, by six members of the council, which really, I think, is, is extremely important when you're talking about the rules that we must all operate under. And I actually think that there is a pretty strong sense of opposition from, I guess, now the minority of the council regarding the rules. And ironically, in 3-24, one of the items that my understanding is the work group created was the idea that rules changes should come only with a supermajority. So to now say that we're going to, you know, the, the group previously had agreed that rules changes should be made with a supermajority, but now pressing forward with changes to the rule with a simple majority, which really does not reflect any sort of consensus, I feel, is very problematic. I'm concerned about some of the things that my colleague, Ms. Pickard, has raised, and I'm grateful to hear that she has amendments on some of those topics. I've also talked, this isn't something I had, you know, brought up in the public previously, but I think the nature of the changes in 4-24 really necessitate full-time council members. If we're going to have seven council members, each supervising three different employees, we need to be looking at turning this council into a full-time council. And I have discussed individually with members of this council, and as far as I can tell, there is no interest in turning the individual members into the full-time council members that I personally think that we should have for other reasons. We are a pop, we have a county with a population larger than the state of Wyoming, yet we are the governing legislative body with seven part-time members, and I think that's a little outrageous. So I'm really concerned, and I don't know, you know, I, I think that my, we can all read the writing on the wall that, quote, "You have the votes," but I don't feel like partisan, I'm sorry, I didn't mean partisan, that something that should be bipartisan, that should, you know, really reflect unity and consensus, should be pushed through simply because you have the votes. I think that's a real insult to this body, because these rules aren't just for today. These rules will go forward in perpetuity. And this, this seems like, unfortunately, you know, I, we have policy disagreements on this council all the time. And, you know, we come to the table knowing that we have policy disagreements. You know, we're voted, we're nominated by parties with opposing views. We come from districts that have very different representation. But the rules that we, that govern us should not be partisan, should not be something that is simply adopted by a simple majority. And again, you know, if my colleagues have the votes, then I can read the writing on the wall, but I just cannot express enough what an insult I think that is to this body, to our constituents, to the staff that we work with every day, and really to the whole county. We should not be operating this way, with something basic like rules.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the question was asked, how, how is this possible? How could this actually go into implementation? I went back to a notebook that I was given in 2019, shortly after taking office the first time, it's actually the County Council Manual. While there are no page numbers, there are tabs, and I believe each of us received these when we take office. The tab of Council Office Procedures and Staff, on the County Council Staff page, on the last paragraph, it talks about the three appointed positions. They are appointed by the county council and report to all seven council members. Then on the page following that, at the top of the page, it says that the duties of the council officers are to keep offices running smoothly, as well as addressing individual council member requests. So what is proposed in the rules resolution here, to me, is no different than what we were given in our manual upon taking office.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
If there is no difference, then we don't need this change.
Ms. Hummer.
Yes, so I want to address a couple of points that came up. I totally agree with Mr. Smith that this could be all addressed and cleaned up in Resolution 3.24. So why not do that? Why not do that all at one time, like we've asked to do, is to consider these together at a session, rather than going back? Because we don't, you know, we try very hard to get bills right the first time, and amend them as we go along to get it. Not to pass one bill and then say, oh, we'll do another cleanup one, because there's no guarantee that there will be a cleanup bill, or that it would pass. As for Ms. Fiedler's comment about that there's no difference in the supervisory, actually, there really is. There's a difference between reporting to someone and supervising. Currently, the chair, and historically, what the chair has been like here is very much like the managing partner of a law firm. They have no greater authority on certain things, but they make decisions on the everyday running. So for instance, somebody who's taking vacation time, that doesn't have to go to all seven people. It can be, you know, the dates can be approved by the chair, just, that's a small thing. So it's just giving that. It's not more authority on certain things, but it helps from the everyday running. If we have seven supervisors, there's a difference between me going to one of our officers and making a request, and they're going to take care of it, and me going as a supervisor and saying, as your supervisor, you have to do this right now. So with seven supervisors who are having that, what will be, what if I go and say, this legislative council, this is top priority, you've got to do this right now, and Ms. Rodvian goes to legislative council and says, you must do this right now? We're both supervisors. Who are they supposed to follow? Do we have to wait until we have a meeting of the body of the whole to have a vote of seven as to what direction it will be? What if I go to the legislative council, and as a supervisor, I say, do not do what Ms. Rodvian asked you to do? I'm your supervisor, don't do that. These are the issues that we get into. This, I don't think that that is probably the intent, but right now, the way this resolution is worded, that's exactly how it could be used. We could, it takes away any autonomy of our officers to work, because at any moment, one of their supervisors can redirect what they're doing. And that will hamstring this council to get anything done. As I said, I think that there are ways, I, I don't know, because my colleagues haven't discussed this with me, but I believe the intent here is they want to make sure that there is not one council member who can control whatever is done on the, in the, behind the scenes with the council. That is not a bad thing to do. We certainly don't want a dictator. I think that our rules have those restraints in place, but I think there are, if not to enough, I think there are ways we could word it to include that, but this one right now is so overly broad, that I think members could put a halt to any action that's taking place on the council.
Thank you. I do have, I do have an amendment which reworks this, which I think incorporates some of the concerns of the four sponsors in looking at our rules. These are our rules of procedure. They are what help guide the council through our legislative meetings and our actions. The rules of procedure are not also a personnel manual. They're not an employee handbook. So there are certain things that have been included into this section, a Title 2 of our, that I think are more appropriately placed in an employee handbook. And if there are a small group of council members that would like to update our employee handbook and work together in an ad hoc committee, I'd be happy to work with you. There's, but, but before we get to the amendment, there are also some just interesting things in here that bring in consultation for, for, for when the council brings on contractual employees, which is interesting, or consultants to the county council, they shall be subject to the approval of the chair of the county council in consultation with one member of the county council from a different political party. So is that, I'm just going to speak from present day, I am the current sitting chair, so is the minority party going to pick a caucus leader for these situations? And if so, what happens in five years when we actually have three political parties represented on this council? Or maybe only one? Do we revise the rules to accommodate that council? This is like Washington politics. This is insane, but, okay. So we have, I think, if this, I do think we've, this, the, the four people sponsoring this resolution have conflated the, the way we use our rules of procedure and what we might need to modernize in an employee handbook. If we have to move towards implementing this, I, okay, this will be fun. We're going to need a charter amendment to allow us to go into closed session, to deal with personnel matters, which I'll be bringing forward if this is the will of the council. But Madam Secretary, can you share the amendment that I worked on, which I believe brings some of the issues and concerns of the four, not that they've spoken to me, so I wouldn't know, but again, if we were having this conversation, like we set out to, yes?
Madam Chair, I have spoken to you over the last few months on what caused my decision to support this amendment, so please stop saying that we haven't spoke to you, but you know exactly where this is coming from. I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith? I was not consulted on this resolution in any way, shape, or form. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1. This amendment restores the responsibility for supervision of the appointed officers' employees of the council to a single supervisor, clarifies that each council member may communicate directly with their appointed officers, requires an employee relations manual for the county council, and adds minimum requirements for the manual.
As I've just stated, this is my amendment. I urge my colleagues to sit with it a minute and consider it. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt. Rodvian, second.
Is there any discussion on Amendment Number 1? I do believe that the artful wording of this amendment brings in some clarity into what was trying to be accomplished in Resolution 4-24, in keeping in the line of how our rules of procedure are currently drafted. I believe it addresses concerns, but also sets apart the need for rules of procedure and employee relations manual for this body. Ms. Rodvian.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Hummer.
Yes, I, I appreciate this amendment, because I do think it brings in and clarifies a bit, I think, the concerns about the supervisory, super, seven supervisors, I, as I shared before, are significant. I'm also bothered by the, the section that says, "The contracts for employees or consultants shall be subject to the approval of the chair of the county council in consultation with one member of the county council from a different political party." Nowhere else in our rules are, is political party mentioned. The administration of the council is done as an administrative body, and nowhere else is there. And when it comes to contracts for employees or consultants, we have already voted on those as a council, because we vote on the budget for our office, and that includes any funds that would be used for consultants or employees. So I'm not certain why this provision would even be needed in there, since we have already approved any of those possible expenditures. But it's also that says that we will be, the seven supervisors will supervise any employee or consultant that comes in. So for instance, one thing we've brought in in the past for consultants or contractual employees to come, was we're having a massive digitalization of our, of our archives. So are the seven of us going to dictate and supervise?
of our archives. So are the seven of us going to dictate and supervise the people who are coming in to scan the documents? That is what this provision says right now. I know all of us, we are part-time people, we are rarely in the office, many of us only come in the day of meetings. And so on the day-to-day supervisory thing, who is going to be monitoring and supervising if someone digitizing? Could I come in and if I see that they're doing a digitization and I'm the supervisor, and I said, I don't want you to do that anymore. I need you to move over here to that. That, again, as I said, would be some chaos that's already there. I don't, I think this clarification that we have here about making it very clear that the council members can all communicate and ask and direct and things for our council members, but for the day-to-day supervisory things, we need to have a point person in the office. I believe that putting in our rules that there are seven supervisors for our officers who are high-level, high-ranking employees, professionals, will harm us in recruiting the best candidates to fill these positions. I'm, not, many professionals are going to come in and say, hmm, seven supervisors who can direct me at any moment. That's not a good recruiting tool that we have. And the employee handbook, I think everyone here is in agreement that we should have an employee handbook, but also that we should have an evaluation process for our employees. And that is something this council has lacked. Including that in the employee handbook is, I 100% agree with. And so I think that those are some steps this council needs to take to move toward modernizing today and moving forward in the future for our people. Again, I urge that we pass this amendment, but even better, that we take both of these back to a work session and combine the two together to get the best rules possible for this council that have the input of everyone. I will state again, no one discussed this resolution with me beforehand, nor have they talked to me about it since then. So this was not a collaborative thing, whereas our original rule sections were. Let us come back together and really work together to make this a council that works for this county.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of my biggest concerns about this, this resolution right here is, and with not having a work session and not having a public hearing, is those are the places where we can really draw out any flaws. And so we are going to, we are contemplating right now pushing through a resolution which has had the most minimal level of vetting. We have all kinds of questions of how this rule will operate in practice. And I think my colleagues have brought forward some very good examples. We don't know the answer to those. We probably, I know that my colleagues, since we received this, have put out some questions to Office of Law of how things will work out. And I believe we have some answers. We're awaiting others. I can't believe that my colleagues would stoop to that level of legislating. It is, it's sloppy, it's reckless, it's irresponsible. And after working with everyone here at least a year, and some of you close to five years, I can't believe this is, we're even considering that. This is not the way to legislate.
I do think, we are actually talking about Amendment number one, I do think it brings in to some more appropriate language, the issues that possibly Resolution four dash twenty-four was looking to address. At this time, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number one.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment number one has been defeated.
So with Amendment number one defeated, it's clear that there was no intention of actually looking to bring any sort of cleanup or any sort of conversation to Resolution four dash twenty-four. So my question is maybe a rhetorical one. I would like to know how my colleagues, especially those sponsoring this legislation, are going to be adapting the way they serve in these roles as county council members so that they can be legitimate supervisors of people, high-level officers of this council, when they're not even present on the daily in the office. If there's no other discussion on Resolution, Ms. Hammer?
Yes, I, Ms. Pickard just asked that question. She said it was rather rhetorical. I'm going to say it's a real question, and I think it's very telling that none of the sponsors of this are in any way trying to defend or explain or address any of the questions we raised about this resolution. Some very big concerns about how we can even operate, and no one's saying a word. I think that that is very telling, and again, it is a poor way to do business and to run things in this county.
We will, my consultation with the Office of Law, the best brief commentary I received was, this is going to be difficult to implement. Like, okay, great, that's helpful. I already knew that, but with that, Ms. Rodvian, did you have?
I would, I feel like I've made my case, and I would like to at least give all of my colleagues an opportunity to act on my request. I move that we hold this resolution four dash twenty-four to have, continue, and go forward with the public hearing on February 20th, Tuesday, February 20th, which is on a Tuesday because of the President's Day holiday, as well as hold a work session where we can get the input of, you know, all of the wonderful staff that work in this county. So I move those two things together.
There is a motion to hold. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on a motion to hold. Resolution four dash twenty-four until February 20th. Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. The resolution, the motion to hold Resolution four twenty-four until
Thank you.
February 20th has been defeated.
So the Resolution four dash twenty-four is now up for a final vote. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution four dash twenty-four.
Madam Chair, may I just make one last comment? I know that this isn't going to change anyone's vote, but it needs to be on the record.
Of course.
Thank you. Please pay attention to who is voting to support this resolution tonight, because this matters. It may not seem like, what is this big deal about rules? But rules are the foundation of how we operate. And if we have individuals who are willing to put forward something so recklessly, a piece of legislation so sloppy, not vetted, not clear about how it's going to operate, not clear of how it's going to impact things down the road, possibly even unaware of how it's already impacting, or maybe don't care about how it's already impacting the county council. This is a travesty. This is a travesty. It's not just rules. This is going to hamstring the county council for the rest of this term and for however many terms to come. And some of the folks that may think they're benefiting from this, this resolution, this rule change now, well, every single person on here, because we're now allowed to run for a third term, everyone here can run for a third term. And you may not be in the same situation that you are right now. You may not be in the majority or the minority that you are in now. So think about how this will affect you in the future if you're not in the position you are in now. And I will just say it one last time, this is a travesty.
Thank you, Ms. Rodvian. I agree, wholeheartedly. I also am incredibly disheartened, heartened by my colleagues' actions this evening. But also, this resolution, as if it passes tonight, as the current chair of the council, I will only be the presiding officer of these meetings. Any other work that this council needs to undertake will have to be taken in the body of the whole as a group of seven. So get ready to get to work. We're going to have an ad hoc committee at first. We're going to have to do some work. All of you that have full-time jobs, get ready to take some time off, because this body, the legislative branch, this county council, is a very important part of county government, and we are going to have work to do that will have to be done from this dais. We might have to have additional work sessions. This is ridiculous. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution four dash twenty-four. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hammer.
Nay.
And Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Four in the affirmative and three in the negative. Resolution number four twenty-four has been adopted. Interestingly enough, I was asked the other day, what is my plan going forward? Well, now it's not my plan. I'll be here on February 13th to run our work session and let people speak. The plan going forward will include all seven of us having to make decisions somehow in open session. So let's get to work, everybody. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until our work session on Tuesday, February 13th, 2024.